If you'd please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff. Alderman Mills is excused. Mayor's airing.
Present. Thank you. We have quorum. Got some ceremonial matters this evening, some good ceremonial. At first, I thought it was Sam Elliott that was joining us. And preparing that with Carl Brooks. Welcome, sir. Come on up here.
Microphone. So we get to actually recognize, Carl is just talking to the city administrator because it's going back. I was like, man, has it been five years already? Yeah, I know. I'd just gotten here six months before that. So I was like, I've been here five and a half years. So had to do all the math on that. And you're still here with us and we appreciate it. So.
I appreciate it.
And I'm gonna let somebody or several people, if they want to, talk about you here a little bit, too. So. But we do want to present you with a five-year certificate of appreciation, signed by myself right there. And thank you for your service to our city, sir, for sure.
Do you want to say something? I'll even hold it for you.
I just enjoy working on all the projects the city has in Harrisonville. I mean, from water, sewer, airport, parks. That's what makes me go. And I really enjoy working on projects. And before you tonight is quite a plethora of even more projects. It makes me even more excited to stick around for a few more years.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you, sir, for sure. All right. Thank you. Next up, no public participation this evening. Next up, we have approval of the minutes for the Board of Aldermen regular meeting, July 7th, 2025. Those were in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Fauch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes stand. Next, we have the Board of Aldermen Minutes Work Session from July 7th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes stand as well. First item up on our agenda items, we have a public hearing, final plat for lots 72A, 128A, 129A, 133A, 134A through 137A, 142A, and 134A, Parkwood East. I'm gonna open that public hearing and we are going to continue this hearing to September 2nd, 2025. And with that, I will close this hearing and we'll pick that up on September 2nd. Next up, we have the second reading of Council Bill 35.
Pardon me. Council Bill 35, an ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, approving a special use permit for an event venue commercial recreational facility on property located at 101 and 103 South Lexington Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you. Christina, I believe.
Keep this brief. I have not received any emails or phone calls on this application, so there's no new testimony.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Dorhoff are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 35 is now ordinance 3735. Next up, we have a public hearing on the vacation of a portion of the Anaconda Road right-of-way located within the Missouri and Northern Arkansas Railroad right-of-way. I'm gonna open that public hearing. And what's that? Patty or? Okay, there we go. Christina.
Keep these still fairly quick. The city is requesting to vacate a portion of the Anaconda Road right-of-way located within the Missouri and Northern Arkansas Railroad right-of-way. More specifically, the portion to be vacated is 100.02 feet by 85 feet, as shown on the attached exhibit. Staff did some search to find out how long this road's been existence for over 100 years. But it was annexed into the city back in 1972. Key issues, I've got just noted that we haven't received any objections and notices were mailed out on June 24th and published in Tribune Times on June 12th. Staff recommends approval requested vacation of a 100 and 100.02 by 85-foot portion of Anaconda Road located within the Missouri and Northern Arkansas Road Railroad right-of-way. Oh goodness. As depicted in the attached exhibit, I do not have anything further in my notes, but I know Patty may have a little additional information to provide.
All right, Patty.
Well, come on, you like talking about projects. Come tell them about the money you got. Carl's really good at getting money.
Okay, Carl.
This project is really part of a bigger project. You've probably heard about the South Commercial Street Extension Project. We would like to kind of sort of kind of work these two projects together. But when the Missouri Department of Transportation contacted us, their railroad division, and said, hey, city, we're hearing you're wanting to possibly close this road crossing on Anaconda Road. And it's a very dangerous crossing. I mean, the visual sight going from east to west is almost, you can't see anything but the track. You literally gotta pull up on the tracks and look both ways to see if either a train's coming. So it's a dangerous crossing. I know we've had a fatality in the last five years. And the plus was when MoDOT's railroad group said, there's $100,000 that MoDOT will provide to the city to basically give us some barricades to put on both sides of the crossing. And that's all we have to do and have a vacation of the of the road right-of-way. We were all in. And we just think it's a very good project. Eliminates this bad crossing. MoDOT Railroad can spend their money they were going to spend on that crossing anyhow and send it, spend it somewhere else. And it will tie in with our South Commercial Street Extension Project, which we hope to have complete design and have it advertised and bid yet this year and construction in 2026. So the road barricades will show up before South Commercial Street Extension Road is complete. But we just don't want to turn down the $100,000.
That's awesome. No, we don't. And with that, clearly, you said everything Patty was gonna say because she's sitting back down.
Exactly.
That's awesome.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Carl?
How will that affect the traffic, the drop, through traffic, the paths that go through there?
Well, they either can go north on Clearwater Drive to Highway 2, or they can kind of take the long way around the barn over to Precision, 267th Street, South Brickplant Road, down to 275th Street, and go east to either Highway 7 or Interstate I-49. But when South Commercial Street Extension Road is opening, then once they get to 267 from South Brickplant, then it's just up and over the hill and they're right there at I-49.
All right, perfect. Any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak on this? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we will move on to the first reading of Council Bill 37.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, vacating a portion of the Anaconda Road right-of-way located within the Missouri and Northern Arkansas Railroad right-of-way and establishing an effective date.
All right, thank you. And that will come back on our August 4th meeting for the second reading. Thank you. Next up, we have another public meeting on the vacation of a portion of the Cedar Street right-of-way adjacent to Block 30, Dutros Edition, south of Locust Street. So this is a public hearing. I'm gonna open that hearing. Christina?
Yeah, the applicant for this application is, they're basically doing some cleanup. The streets there were dedicated a long time ago, part of the 1912 plat from the original town. And they are not laid out exactly as the plat shows them. So this is trying to line up the right-of-way. They've done some correction in years past on the eastern side of Cedar Street. And so this is to clean up the western side, which will also help Mr. Miller with his property there. So the Board of Aldermen had approved ordinance in 19, sorry, 2019, vacating unused and unimproved Oak Street right-of-way, Buckeye Street right-of-way, and an alley remnants that are all part of 403 Locust Street today. And then we did a rezoning June 2nd of 2025, approved that rezoning from general industrial M2 district to single-family residential R1 district. So again, this is kind of part of that, cleaning that up. We haven't received any objections on this application and notices were mailed on June 11th and published in Tribune Times on June 19th. Staffs recommend approval of the requested vacation of right-of-way for a portion of Cedar Street right-of-way adjacent to Block 30 Dutros Edition and south of Locust Street, as depicted in the attached exhibit.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Christina? All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody here would like to speak to this?
I think she covered it.
She covered it? All right. There you go. I like it when that happens. Yeah. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing then. And we will move on to the first reading of Council Bill 38.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, vacating a portion of the Cedar Street right-of-way adjacent to Block 30 Dutros Edition, south of Locust Street, and establishing an effective date.
All right, thank you. So that will come back to our August 4th meeting for the second reading. Next, we have another public hearing on code amendments and land use table. I will open that meeting and we'll turn it over to Christina again.
I'll keep this very brief. The proposed code amendments to Appendix A, the land use table for Chapter 405, is to allow the uses of packaging, processing, and warehousing within the service business C2 district with an approved special use permit. These uses are typically found in industrial zones, but could make sense within the C2 district when they're not the first-tier property, especially if it's a very large C2 property. So in these limited situations, that's where we're wanting to be able to allow that to be a special use permit. Currently, these uses are prohibited within the service business C2 district. Allowing them with a special use permit allows staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Board of Aldermen the flexibility to review such uses within this district on a case-by-case basis and appropriate, you know, add appropriate restrictions or deny the use if it's not a good fit.
Any questions for Christina? All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody here want to speak to this? All right, seeing none, I will close that public hearing. And we will move on to the first reading of Council Bill 39.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending Appendix A land use table under Chapter 405 zoning regulations and Title IV land use regulations of the Harrisonville Municipal Code and establishing an effective date.
All right, thank you. We'll bring that back to the August 4th meeting for the second reading. Next up, we have an administrative reading of Council Bill 40.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, amending the operating budget for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025, and establishing an effective date.
All right, Jeremy, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. For you this evening is a group of finance housekeeping items to amend the operating budget. We're handling various issues, including changes to the vehicle replacement fund, the VERF, credit card fees, Lake Harrisonville pump replacement, a police department grant, an electric system study, the electric tree trimming budget, and police department evidence room cameras, and the Hometown Grid customer outage communication system. So we threw a lot of things in there because we've been kind of trying to group these together without making little changes as we go. So answer any questions you have.
Questions for Jeremy on this one? Seeing none, this is an administrative reading ordinance. And I'd entertain a motion. There's no questions.
I'm going to approve.
Got a motion from Alderman Fauch with a second from Alderman Turner. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this is.
Suspend the rules? Oh. Make sure we suspend the rules and move it to the second reading.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks. Good catch there because I was rolling right along there. All right.
Just been back next time.
So used to doing public hearings, you know. It's, all right, so we've got a motion from Alderman Fauch to suspend the rules on Council Bill 40 and move it to a second reading. And a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Alderman Dorhoff are excused.
All right, second reading.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, amending the operating budget for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025, and establishing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills and Dorhoff are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 40 is now ordinance 3736.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next up, we have the first reading of Council Bill 41.
An ordinance to the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, imposing a sales tax for public safety purposes at the rate of 1 and 1/4% pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Section 94.510 Revised Statutes of Missouri, and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in the city on November 4, 2025.
All right, we're gonna turn this one over to the city administrator. Brad?
All right, so this first one is the 1% for the sales tax. This was pointed out in our April retreat. The Board of Aldermen told us to have this ready to put on the November ballot. Our main thrust of the need is for our public safety with our ambulance service, with the police department, even some needs we have at the animal shelter. And so to be able to have this 1% to point out some things on the general sales tax. When you look at the cities around us, we're at 0.25% currently. Belton, Raymore, Pleasant Hill, and Peculiar are all at 1%. When you look at combined sales tax, which, you know, we have it combined with some of our public safety ones and different things that are out there, Belton's at 3.25%. Raymore's at 2.5%, Pleasant Hill at 2.75%, and Peculiar at 3%. And we're currently at 2.3%. So this puts us right in line with where Belton is on their sales tax. And on the general sales tax, puts us in line with the other, all the cities that are at the 1%. Let me point out a little bit more with this. So let's also look at, even in some of the cities that, on their sales tax, what they are on their property tax that are paying for these same services. Harrisonville's at 64 cents. That's for everything. Police, fire, public works, parks, everything. 64 cents. Belton is at $2.04 on their property tax. East Lynn is at $1.89 on their property tax. Lake Winnebago, $1.61. Peculiar is at 90 cents. Pleasant Hill's at $1.16. And Raymore is at $1.21. So some of these services are being put directly on the residents there because it's property taxes. If you look at fire districts in these cities with Peculiar and Raymore and Pleasant Hill, their sales tax is at 3% to 2.5%. But their West Peculiar Fire District is $1.32 just for ambulance and fire. That's what Peculiar residents are paying, just for ambulance and fire. South Metro Fire, Raymore residents are paying an additional, on top of their Raymoors, $1.21. They're paying an additional $1.25 just for ambulance and fire. And then you've got Central Cass that's around us. The residents are paying $1.16 just for ambulance and fire. Dolan, West Dolan Fire just recently did theirs and they're at $1. If you remember, we were supplanting that for years and running services over there until Chief Sullivan sent the Dear John letter. And so you're seeing a lot of these other cities with their fire districts are paying a lot. And Harrisonville has a unique opportunity that the other cities don't have. They have a huge influx of outside people that are coming in here. From our Pacer AI data, 90% of the people that are buying things in Harrisonville don't live here. So that's a huge opportunity for the residents to know that they're getting 10 on their return of 1 for the amount of people that are coming in and helping paying for these services. We're not putting it on the back of the residents of Harrisonville. We're putting it on those that are coming into Harrisonville and utilizing that. So just wanted to make sure I spelled that out for Jimmy as well. So when he writes that, he can kind of tell we're doing that. But that's, this is the best opportunity to get our public safety and where it needs to be, where we need to get in a lot of our areas and have the outsiders pay for it instead of the residents of Harrisonville paying for the load of it. And so with this tonight, this put the additional 1% on the general sales tax that we could be able to collect if the voters approve. And this is a simple majority to pass it.
So it's an additional 1 to our quarter we've already got. So the total is 1.
Okay.
What does this do to the overall tax rate? What are we at, like 9?
We're at, we're at 2, oh, overall at 8. What is it, Daniel?
8.2.
8.2.
This is going to take us to 9.4 or 5?
Combined. And combined, if you look at the others, like Belton, they're over 10.
All right. Any other questions on that?
And I'd just like to point out to you all this again. I just told you, Belton's at 1%. We're at 0.25. We're combined at 2.3. They're at 3.25. And last year, they brought in only 500,000 more than we did in sales tax. So this proves again how much more people are coming into Harrisonville to purchase things. I know with the TDD Group, Alderman Mills pointed out that that 1% just on those businesses on 291 is bringing in 1.8 million dollars a year. That's not 10,000 people in population that are spending 1.8 million dollars.
This is a great opportunity.
It's a huge opportunity for Harrisonville to capitalize on all the people that are coming in from the outside.
Well, when you look at our, where are people transported in from? I mean, we've got them coming 291, we've got them 49, we've got them from both 2 and 7. And I think especially when we, we've got to do our due diligence when we advertise this and we promote this of where people are coming from, and especially on the gas tax, too. I mean, you've got three truck stops right along the highway and they are used. I mean, QuickTrip, everybody knows around here, QuickTrip is the cheapest gas around the Kansas City area. So people come to get gas here, if nothing else. So we just have to make sure we promote it correctly and informationally.
This report is only a sample material.
Yeah, you know, I think the other thing we need to talk about is the burden that is almost unique to Harrisonville in terms of emergency services. You know, and the cost of providing those services has, you know, skyrocketed and just the equipment and the personnel and things like that. So there's a pretty fulsome story to be told there, I think. And as the chief pointed out, we're, our fire department for its size is running three times the amount of calls as a result of this huge population influx that comes in here.
But he has cut back on the transfers.
Yes.
Good job there.
That's good, yeah. All right, thanks. We're gonna bring that back for a second reading on our, at our August 4th board meeting. Okay, thanks, Brad. Thanks, everybody. Move along to the first reading of Council Bill 42.
An ordinance to the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, imposing a motor fuel fee to be used to fund the construction, reconstruction, maintenance, repair, and signing of roads and streets at the rate of 1 cent per gallon to be imposed on all merchants for the sale of fuel used for propelling motor vehicles pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Article 4, Section 30A of the Missouri Constitution, and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the special election called to be held in the city of November 4, in the city on November 4, 2025.
All right, back to city administrator, Mr. Ratliff.
So similar to the things I said before, additionally, 96% of the people buying gasoline in Harrisonville don't live in Harrisonville. And we also, this is going to take 67.7% of the people to approve. So this is going to be a heavy lift to be able to get that approved. Additionally, a lot of people, I think the hardest part of the educational component for the residents will be they think they're buying gas here, therefore the sales tax comes to us. It doesn't. All the sales tax of gasoline goes to Jeff City. Jeff City distributes the gas tax based on your last census population. So even though we've got all these trucks and we are filling up with all these gas stations, we only get what's allotted for 10,000 residents. So if we pass this one penny, then it will be actually a point of purchase that we would get that penny for. That would go straight to our roads. If you notice in the language, can be used for all other things. People think you have to plant it somewhere else. It's used for roads and streets.
All right, any questions on that? Comments? All right, again, another great opportunity, I think.
Actually, I was just gonna ask, what other cities have the fuel tax in our area, do you know? Only Peculiar is the only one in Cass County.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's one penny there. They, it. They, it always passed, they ran it five times. It passed always like 60%, 64%, but getting that 67.7 was the hurdle.
What's that past? Von Jay might be different.
Yeah. They didn't campaign against it, but they didn't help toward it either.
Perfect, that'll come back for a second reading at our August 4th board meeting. All right, final item on our agenda this evening is the first reading of Council Bill 43.
In ordinance calling a bond election in the City of Harrisonville, Missouri.
All right.
All right, so this is the, for revenue bonds only. This is for water, sewer, and a few stormwater. If you remember the nine-year plan that you all received and approved for the water and the sewer rate, had those plans in there. From that, 62.7 million for water projects, 16 and a half million for sewer projects, and then 2.5 million on stormwater projects. These, we're not asking the voters to do these projects. These projects are coming along and they're part of your rate structure system, but if we pass the revenue bonds, then it makes us eligible for the state revolving fund loan, and that means we get 1.75% interest. If we go out to market right now, and we just got this hot off the press this morning, if we go to market right now, it's going to cost 5.5%. So that $23 million raw water line that we have to put in from Lake Harrisonville, all of it, we, if the voters say no, then the voters are going to pay 5.5% interest on the loan. If they say yes, then they can pay 1.75% interest on the loan. So it's just that simple. We're not asking permission for the projects, we're asking them to allow us to go in the state revolving fund so that we pay 1.75% interest instead of 5.5% interest. I think that needs to be very, very clearly stated. Because there's a history with some people that were asking, we're not asking on the projects, and also, we're not doing all the projects at once. So you're looking at $82 million in revenue bonds, we're not doing that all next year. This is spread out over the nine-year process, but it makes us eligible to lock in for the state revolving funds at 1.75% interest.
Basically, it's telling them we want 4% decrease in the interest rate, that's it. Because we're doing the projects no matter what.
Right.
They're going to be funded, got to be funded some way. It's either they pay 5.7 or 5.2, whatever.
5.5.
5.5 or 1.7, so reduction in the interest.
And if people say, well, if you pay more interest, how's that going to affect me? Your water and sewer rates goes up.
And the 1 point will last for the nine years? Will we be able to get that for nine years? Okay, just make it. I know that will come up, so I just want to make sure.
Can you calculate a dollar figure of interest savings over the nine-year period?
That'd be huge.
Jeremy probably already has that.
I do not have it, but we will come up with it.
And there's some bonds, and some of the state has been allowing for 30-year bonds, special metals water and sewer lines. They really don't do that on streets. They don't like doing that long in streets, but water and sewer lines have a longer longevity than streets. I just want to make sure that we get very clear with people, we're not asking to do the projects, we're asking them the permission to get the lower interest rate. Because as you all know, if we don't do like the raw water line, then that means there's no water. I mean, there's one line, and it should have been replaced probably 20 years ago. And so now we're behind that people.
And it's going to...
There's a reason you don't keep kicking that can down the road.
All right, we'll bring that back to a second reading at our August 4th board meeting as well. All right, we'll move along to the Alderman and committee reports. We'll start with Alderman Milner.
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fauch.
No report.
Alderman Turner. Okay, let's go on down, keep moving on down, Alderman Davidson.
I guess I should say it's good to be back.
It is.
So it's good to be back.
It's nice to see you face.
It's good to see you, yeah. Alderman Franklin.
I just wanted to urge everybody, if you have been out to the park recently, to go out and take a look at the walkway and the wall that has been put up from T-Mobile and the work that has been done, the rock work, I mean, it is stellar looking. They have done an awesome job. The staff, they have done really well. They're going to be putting in some railings, and from what I understand, some benches. So it comes off just as you're going down the nature trail where the spillway is, they have a tremendous amount of rock work there, and it looks really nice. So I urge everybody to go out there and take a look at it. And I was reading, too, about the Harrisonville School District working with West Central Missouri for daycare and the school system. I think that is a great idea. I think it will help teachers tremendously, and it will help others' families that meet the income criteria eligibility. I think it's a great idea, and I'm sure that the teachers will really love having to travel all over the city to sit down, drop their kids off at daycare. So I think it's a great opportunity for the schools and the students and the parents alike, so kudos to them for coming up with that. And just a reminder that next month, Saturday, August 16th, is the Doggy Dodge. We're going to have the Depot Dog Express out there, Garden Gate, Apex Comics will be out there. We have got damaged goods we'll be playing from 10 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon. And so bring your forever friends out there and have a good time. Frolic, we've got some giveaways, we're going to have a raffle, so come on out and enjoy a few hours with us and bring your forever friends and have a good time.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Chaney.
Your Honor, I have nothing.
Nothing, all right. Thank you very much. We're up with the report from city administrator now.
All right, the fall citywide cleanup would be on the 6th of September, and the fall brush drop-off will be the 12th and the 13th of September. South Sur project, we're down to mainly the biggest issues is dealing with the lagoon, issues that are down there with the contractor, and some other punchless items. As of today, if they are not done with that, the liquidated damages start ticking off again, starting tomorrow. So we are hoping to get that wrapped up. Royal Street, we still are negotiating, city attorneys negotiating with the property owner attorney. James Street, the Blueberry, that project has started, the seven property owners have been notified when that project started, and so that's on the way. Bechardite Project is moving forward, but we have one property owner that we're still dealing with that you all gave permission on Comden Nation last month, and so hopefully we can get that done before we get to that point. Ash Street Bridge over Town Creek Project, hoping for start in mid to late August on that project, and so that'll be a good project moving forward. There, I talked to you about the South Commercial Project. Tomorrow, the bids come in for the street asphalt program as well as the curb and gutter program, so we'll be seeing the numbers on that, hoping for good numbers to come in on both. Highway 2, muddy tributary, number two project, staff continues to work with MoDOT. MoDOT staff approved some of the right-of-ways plans and ADOT packages. City staff have began engaging with landowners, so we're hoping to get that moving forward and bid this fall as well, and moving this fall as well, Carl Schickings said. Then Patty and I met with the new area engineer from MoDOT, expressed some of our disappointment on some of these projects and the slowness and the responses. The other thing we talked about is when the city reached in the commercial culverts to help them out by pulling all that brush and trees out, and they never came and cleaned it up after we did that for them, and by the end of the week, he had it all picked up. So we're thankful to the new area engineer that's responding effectively to us, and appreciate that, hopefully some on these projects as well. We are having issues with broadband contractors in the area, especially Comcast has been a problem. Our public works department has to do the locates. Last week, they did over 137 locates. That's taking, you know, we don't have staff that just do locate. That's a lot of locating. And we've had some damage to some of the stuff in our right-of-ways, so Comcast has removed some contractors, removed some project managers, but we are meeting weekly now public work staff with those providers to try to do that. I know we've sent out the Harrisonville Happenings contact information, and then Daniel sent out today on social media to people if they have problems or in front of their homes and stuff, that we put their numbers out there as well, because they have definitely been blowing up city halls, phone lines on a lot of that, so we're trying to get that information out to the residents. Then the animal shelter, want to thank Hometown Flooring for the new flooring that they put in and the new counter, that's going into the animal shelter as well. And we also had H&amp;H Pro Services that come to town, they redid the striping at the fire department and at the police department at no charge as their contributory to our public safety group and being a part of our community. And then there was RFP submittals for the city prosecutor, and so William Marshall is the new city prosecutor, signed off on that contract today, and he'll be working for us since the passing of our last city prosecutor. And then Alderman Franklin talked about the good things going on at the park, so that's all I have.
That's it, all right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Municipal Court Report, June 2025, was in your packets there. Questions from the media? Nothing, thank you for being here, sir. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion.
Motion from Alderman Davidson, second from Alderman Fauch, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned to regular session. Take, I think we need...